6:16 PM, and I'm calling the meeting to order. And I'm sorry for the delay. Ms. Raymond, can you do the roll call, please?
Sure.
Let's see, Ms. Bishop is not here. Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Ms. Prin?
Here.
Ms. Daniels-Williams is not here tonight. Mr. Claffey?
Here.
Ms. Darling?
Here.
Ms. Chilio is not here. Ms. Lampier?
Here.
And Ms. Raymond, we do have a quorum.
Okay, can you read the prayer, Ms. Raymond? And then, can, Mr. Johnson, can you do the pledge?
Aye. Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty of managing the educational institutions of our beloved city. In our common endeavors, may we find a spirit of unity and understanding which will enable us to face our multiple problems with an objective mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will be for the betterment and greater happiness of all of our federal citizens. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so, tonight, we have a presentation from Meals Matter, a student organization working to eliminate food insecurity in our city. And tonight, the group is led by Ms. Anton, and students Ashley Franco, Claire Hildebrand, Ben Raymond, and Madeline Zellers will be making the presentation. So go ahead, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the Board of Ed, Dr. Andreid, Assistant Superintendents Pasca and Sarfati, and those present in the audience. I'm Claire Hildebrand, and I'm a junior at Nashua High School North, and I've been a member of Meals Matter since I was a sophomore. Meals Matter began in 2018 as a student-led group at Nashua High School South with teachers Lisa Yates and Suzanne Winters. The program was a way to address food insecurity at South, and then branched out to include Nashua High School North. Meals Matter partnered with the United Way of Greater Nashua as the fiscal agent to make the fundraising and financial management easier. The initial fundraising brought in $30,000, which has been tremendously helpful in supporting the program today. During the pandemic, the project was on pause, but when the federal program to fund breakfast and lunch for all ended, it was clear there was going to be a need for Meals Matter to return. In the fall of 2022, our group from Student Voice decided to revitalize the program and make it district-wide, so students and families at all schools would be supported. We want to continue to bring awareness to Meals Matter and raise funds in order to eliminate food insecurity in the Nashua school district. Now, we would like to introduce Ashley Franco to talk more about our accomplishments.
Thank you, Claire. My name is Ashley Franco. I'm also a junior and have been a member of Meals Matter since sophomore year. Over the past two years, we have worked closely with Food Service and United Way to make sure our program was supporting the students and families who are most in need. During these years, we have eliminated debt for all students who are on the REDUCE program but still struggle with paying the balance. We also have been covering debt for any student who has qualified for the free and REDUCE program but had a prior balance on their account. Additionally, we also add funds to lunch accounts for students experiencing special circumstances, such as the loss of a parent or an unexpected financial hardship in the family. On top of helping with lunch debt, we also try to provide assistance with gift cards to Market Basket for the holidays, and we are hoping to expand that for the next year. This year, we held a successful Empty Bowls event in February and raised almost $4,000 with it. As you can see from the debt, we have eliminated over the past two years. Fundraising is very important to us, and we appreciate any support we can get. I'd like to introduce Ben Raymond, who will talk about the Over the Edge event for this year.
Thank you, Ashley. Hi, I'm Ben Raymond, and I'm a sophomore at Nashua North, and I'm a new member to the group. I joined at the beginning of this year because I saw all of the hard work that these people put in last year, including during this fundraiser. We participate in the Over the Edge event run by the United Way of Nashua to fundraise money for our cause. Over the Edge includes six fellow members of our group, along with Mr. Anton, our coordinator's husband, who are going to be rappelling down the side of the Brady-Sullivan Building in order to raise money. Last year, we raised over $5,000, and this year, we are well on our way to meeting that goal with $4,000 raised. We wanted to bring awareness to all the hard work that they've been doing and encourage all present to scan the QR code and donate what they can. Our goal is to hit over $7,000 raised, so we can continue to help students and families in need. I'd like to introduce Madeline Zellers, who will be talking about our future.
Thank you, Ben. I'm Madeline Zellers, a junior at North. Last year, when Meals Matter was reintroduced, I joined immediately and have been an active member since then. Six students, including Claire and myself, participated in Over the Edge last year, and we are thrilled to watch it unfold again. Meals Matter is a district-wide program currently run by students and staff, by North students and staff. We are looking to expand participation by establishing a designated contact at each school. That person will share information and coordinate support for our future fundraisers. Additionally, we hope PTO groups will support Meals Matter by spreading information to outside our schools. We are also looking to collaborate with organizations such as Nashua Goes Back to School, the Holiday Stroll, and the Nashua Farmers Market. To continue our fundraising efforts, overall, we wish to keep the ball rolling for future Meals Matter members and continue to support food insecure students and their families throughout Nashua. Although there are only four of us speaking tonight, we would like to recognize our fellow members of Meals Matter. Doreen Burgess, who works tirelessly to ensure Meals Matter funding is going directly to those who need it, and Mike Appleberg, President of United Way, who works closely with our team to plan our events and fundraisers. Thank you so much for your time. We are happy to answer any questions, or you can reach out to our advisor, Leslie Anton, for more information.
Okay, does anyone have any questions for the kids? Oh, Ms. Raymond?
We always have questions. So currently, you guys are only at North this year, or are you in other schools as well this school year?
So this school year, we are, yeah, we're students at North, the ones you saw on the last slide, pretty much run the whole effort, but it affects, like, every school.
So if there are students at other schools who are struggling to pay for their school lunches, does the money that you're raising through your coordinated efforts go to students at any school, or is it only for students in your school?
So the money goes to students in every school, elementary to high school.
All right, thank you. Thank you so much, guys. You're doing really, oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Darling?
Not a question. I just want to say thank you, guys, for what you do. I've been one of those parents more times than I can count with a balance on the lunch slip, and it's embarrassing, and it's hard. And there's nothing worse than feeling like you can't feed your own child, and to know that you guys are putting in the work, that's amazing. And I'm just, from the bottom of my heart, thank you so much for everything you guys are doing.
Ms. Raymond?
Thank you. I actually have a follow-up question to that. So I know at the elementary school, students are allowed to run a balance. What's the rule for middle and high school students if students at lunchtime don't have money on their account or don't have money to pay for it?
They're not supposed to be running a balance, so we work with those families to identify what that issue is. A lot of times, it's a call home. Sometimes, it's, you know, a parent who just forgot to put money on the card. Other times, the assistant principals get involved because there's other things at work, and work with those families to try to support their needs.
So with Meals Matter, does that mean that that student can go somewhere within the building and get money or credit or something for that day? How does that work?
I think there's an opportunity to kind of work with the student, the family, down the road about what those needs are. I think a lot of times, a lot of things that Meals Matter has done unanimously, so protect everyone who was involved, but it's kind of, you know, usually kind of, I think it was last year, Ms. Anton, around Christmas, that you kind of absolved some of the debts that came across.
That might be a question the kids can't totally answer. So the way that we work it is if they're, Doreen Burgess is in contact with me very often, and we try to clear everybody's debt twice a year, so around Christmas time, and then we look at it again at the end of the school year. And she's well aware of the students who definitely need the assistance, are on REDUCE but really struggle with the balance. And then, as Mr. Pasca said, as situations arise, our assistant principals in the various schools or principals in the various schools might know that a student needs additional help, so, you know, we look at what the balances are. If they're above kind of what is considered a general normal threshold, then there's a phone call home to find out if there's additional circumstances, and Meals Matter can cover those. Or sometimes, families just need a little bit of assistance. We meet them halfway, and then they're able to pick up from there. So it's kind of a case-by-case situation.
Mr. Johnson?
Just thinking about it, would there be a way, I have a senior, he's going to have a balance, but would there be a way for graduating seniors who have a balance on their lunch programs to donate that balance back to kids who need it?
That's an excellent question. I would have to ask Food Service about that. I'm not sure what happens with those funds if there's a balance left over, but if it's, I can certainly check into that and let everybody know what can we do with that. If it can be donated back to Meals Matter, then that money would get shifted over to the United Way, and then we basically withdraw from our account at United Way to pay balances.
Okay.
I'll ask.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we're all set. Thanks, guys, and good luck with your fundraiser. I hope you do really well.
Thank you.
All right, so next, I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda. So moved. And a second?
Second.
Thanks. So that's Ms. Raymond and Ms. Prin, and should you, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those that oppose, say nay. Just so that you have to say all those opposed just once tonight. Yeah, thanks, Christina. And Ms. Darling. Okay, so the next thing is our first public comment period. Could you grab the sheet, Mr. Johnson?
Oh, I apologize. That went out a little late. Did everyone have an opportunity to sign up?
Yep. This is for, this is for only things on the agenda.
So green, right?
Yeah. For a public?
No. Okay, all right, so no public comments for the first period?
I'm sorry about that. I just signed up here because I saw people signing.
All right, so one.
Okay, all right, go ahead. You say your name.
I'll cross my name out. Actually, there's something else I want to bring up. Gary Hoffman, 300 Perham Street, Nashua, New Hampshire. I'm also the vice president of the union. I'll be taking over as president July 1st. Two quick items. I just want to say that the, from our end, the NTU, we support the two new business items with the NTU MOU 2024 on PD days and the sidebar agreements in the SIC Bank with the teachers, secretaries, and paras. Our members actually did have to vote on all three of the sidebar agreements with the SIC Bank. They all overwhelmingly passed. The big change for, if you were to accept this, is the SIC Bank would be an opt-out versus an opt-in. Oftentimes, our members, when they are first hired with the district, there's a lot of new things and new benefits are being explained to them, and they don't understand the importance of the SIC Bank. And then something happens, you know, they get cancer or some other emergency. This would require the members to sign a form to opt out of it, which is something, you know, for, I don't know any of our members that don't want to be a member of it once they learn about it. But if they do, you know, they can sign a form and later on, opt out of it. So all are, pretty much, every single one of our members who voted agreed with this sidebar. One final thing, in your liaison reports, you're going to be, I believe, getting a report on Ed Council. We made a motion at our last Ed Council meeting, and we're going to create a joint board of education and teachers' union, along with collaboration with, obviously, the school district and Dr. Andreid, to evaluate the changes to the middle schools for the 2024-2025 school year. So a lot of changes, and we think it's important that the district, the union, and the school board collaborate to evaluate the effectiveness of these changes, and we're looking to issue a report, joint school board, district, and NTU, to the school board on the effectiveness of all the changes to the middle school for the upcoming school year. And I'm sure Ms. Bishop will speak to you. We're looking for a school board member to work with us on that evaluation piece. So I'm excited. I think it's going to be a very good way for the school board, the NTU, and the district to work together on something. So thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody else?
That's all for first comments.
Okay, all right, so it's time for superintendent comments.
Bob, can you pass it down?
Thank you. I want to congratulate Audrey Malaney, South class of 2024, and Selena Zhao, North class of 2025, two honors biotechnology and biomedical science students who placed as runner-ups to just four finalists in the highly competitive Second Annual BioTrek Championship last week in Manchester. The mission of the competition is to have students' teams identify a medical problem, design a tissue-engineered medical product to address the problem, and then develop a business model around the project. Audrey and Selena teamed up to design a product they called Opt-In. Opt-In is a biofabricated tissue meshwork treatment designed for a medical syndrome that causes optic nerve damage called primary open-angle glaucoma, a leading cause of blindness. I think that's on everyone's syllabus, so it's incredible. They advance to the finals where four biofabrication industry representatives from around the country judge the competition. From what their teachers tell us, both Aubrey and Selena showed poise and extensive knowledge about their product and its application while presenting and answering questions. Congratulations to Audrey and Selena for their creative problem-solving skills. Well done. Congratulations to the North, Nashua High North and Nashua High South track teams who competed in the NHII championships over the weekend. We had several first-place finishers. North Girls 4x400 relay team, Christina Juris, Allison Frye, Rosalie Nervé, Janelle Thomas, at 4 minutes, 1.74 seconds. South Eliza Mercado won the short part at 49 feet, 7.5 inches, and disc at 148 feet and 1 inch. South Boys 4x800 relay, Danielle Byrne, Andrew Byrne, Mika Allen, and Camden Bryan, at 8 minutes and 9.92 seconds. South Boys 4x400 relay, Mika Allen, Sergio López, Raven Olsen, and Marion Perry, at 3 minutes and 29 seconds. And Naya Musa won the 100 dash at 12.28 seconds. That's, I'm not a runner, but that's all fast to me. So congratulations to our track and field champions, and graduations. Just a reminder about the most important dates of the school year. Monday, June 10th, at 7:00 PM, Nashua High South at Stellows. Tuesday, June 11th, at noon, Redwood Academy at the Hunt Memorial Building. And Tuesday, June 11th, at 7:00 PM, Nashua School North at Stellows. Thank you.
Okay, now, we're going to do the board's response to the superintendent's comments, and I'm going to start with Ms. Raymond.
Thank you. I just want to say, congratulations to both the academic, impressive winners of the biotech competition, and the athletes. But I also just want to say a huge congratulations to our CTE program and the biotechnology teacher. It is remarkable, given the financial constraints of our district, that we are able to offer, like, really some world-class STEAM education. So well done, kids, and well done, staff.
Ms. Darling?
No comment.
Mr. Claffey?
No comment.
Ms. Prin?
No comment.
Mr. Johnson?
Just impressive with what all those kids doing with learning from the classes from South and taking that and applying things that could change, you know, the world and allow people to see better. I mean, that's really quite an impressive task, and then, yeah, those kids are fast.
It's really nice to hear that our kids are excelling in different arenas of life, so thank you. And now, we have a comment. Mr. Maris, do you have anything you'd like to say?
I do have a couple of words to say. Mind it. So first, I'd like to give an update to the new dress code that was passed by the North Student Senate earlier this year. It passed unanimously in the South Student Senate, and I just talked to Mr. Richard today, and he verified that he approves of it, so hopefully, within the next couple of weeks, we can get a meeting with Mr. Pasca and Mrs. Raymond to hopefully, like, approve that and then bring it before the board, so it can be put in place for next year. Again, a couple days ago, on the 25th, the Boys 4x800 meter relay team, Dan Byrne, Andrew Byrne, Mike Allen, and Camden Bryan, they became state champions, running only 3 seconds off the school record of 8 minutes, 9 seconds, 92 milliseconds. And then, the Boys 4x800 meter relay team broke the school record, running, I believe, 3 minutes and 29 seconds. That was Camden Bryan, Michael Meneses, Raven Olsen, and Marion Perry. And they will be going to the meet of champions on Sunday. I believe that is the June 2nd. The last regular day for seniors is going to be this Friday, and there's, finals will be June 3rd and June 4th, which is Monday and Tuesday next week. Make-up date is Wednesday, the 5th, and make sure you turn in your school issued Chromebooks this Friday, unless you need those for your final. For the rest of us, we have finals Wednesday and Thursday, which is the 12th and 13th, and then 14th is the last day, which is also the final make-up day. And that's what I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so next, we have the Committee on Finance and Operations, and I'm going to make the motions for that. So first, I'd like to move to approve the athletic department's use of final forms as a new online registration platform, beginning in June 2024. The implementation fee and annual expense will come from Athletic Department's contract services line of the operating budget, which is 91.1.01233853628.
So moved.
And, oh man. Any questions or comments? Okay, so seeing none, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Now, the second motion for tonight is a move to approve the proposed upgrades to Nashua High School North boardroom from pro AV in an amount not to exceed $45,033. The funding is to come from account 91.1.99222553628. Any comments or questions? Oh, I'm sorry.
So moved.
So, second?
I'll say I'll second it. What are we doing?
Mr. Claffey did second it. Oh, okay, I wasn't sure.
That works. What are we doing to the boardroom?
We're going to finish the, what we started last year, which is, this is phase one of the project. We had voted on it and everything. As you know, we had to get new microphones, but now, we're going to be getting a new video processor, I think better microphones, display in the equipment. It's more stuff behind the scenes for the guys who do the television aspect for meetings.
Thank you. So in the past, when we had talked about these upgrades, initially, it was, well, maybe not initially, the last big time that we talked about them was during COVID, and we talked about potentially having Zoom capability in this, in this room for meetings when we have guests from out of town. Is that on part of this package, or is this package not related to that at all?
Mr. Dunham, you could answer that.
Yeah, this package does not do that. This fixes the backroom, so to speak. We've been having some issues with recordings and hearing things clearly, so this is to fix the processor and a number of other things, but we won't be adding the Zoom just yet. Might it be able to be done next? And then, they talked about TV screens on the walls, like you see at the Aldermanic Chamber, but at this point, this is just to fix part two of the original.
It's really about making sure that people out in the community are able to see and hear our meetings.
And when, for the notes, when Tara and Ale need to record things. And they've had, we've had a few issues with.
Right, where the recorder doesn't function.
Yes, exactly.
Yeah, that's super fun to try and recreate it from our chicken scratch.
Any other questions? Okay, so all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
And anyone opposed? Okay, motion passes. So the next one is, I move to approve the purchase of countertops for the Nashua North Tea Stop School Store at a cost of $5,675. Funding is to come from trust fund 7076, $2,837.36, and special revenue fund 2258, $2,837.64.
So moved.
Any questions? Great, so, so seeing none, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Next one is, the next one is a little bit long. It's, okay, I'm going to make a motion to approve the purchase of six new storefronts to be installed at Bicentennial. Vendors refer to memo written by Sean Smith dated May 15th. Funding from deferred maintenance not to exceed $100,000. And the memo is actually included in the materials for the meeting, so you can find it online. So, which is, become just getting that, Mr. Claffey?
So moved.
Thank you. Any questions? Ms. Raymond?
Can you just, I know, I read the memo and all of the quotes, but I still don't understand, even having been on the JS SBC, what exactly the storefronts are. Is it all of the classroom doors with windows that have to be replaced, or am I misunderstanding what this is?
This will replace some of them. I think it's six of them, but it's, it's the windows and the doors.
That are on the exterior of the building, not the interior?
Exactly.
Okay, and there's asbestos in the walls, and so that needs to be remediated? Well, potentially.
Potentially, but we will have, there's probably some, but that will be dealt with professionally as it is required to be.
Okay.
But we've been chipping away at these. This is a way to prevent, you know, doing a significant renovation. If you can chip away at these, these are, you know, over 20 years old now, and there's a little bit of leakage, et cetera, happening, so.
Yeah, I mean, certainly, we don't want water damage getting into the classrooms and creating structural problems, so.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, so seeing none, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And so the next one is, I move to approve the purchase of 120 new desks for the North High School from Furco for a cost of $25,582.80 to be charged to account 91.104116071800.
So moved.
Any questions? Okay, so seeing none, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
And anyone opposed? Okay. Hold on just a second. Okay, I'm going to make a motion to approve the fiscal year 24 April transfer report.
So moved.
Any questions for anyone? These are a little bit expensive, just because it's the end of the school year, and this is how the teachers keep track of how much money they have and manage to spend down, what they can do for their schools at the end of the year. So, any questions? Okay.
This isn't Mr. Dunham's last official meeting, is it?
No, it's not.
So we can put him, we're just going to prologue the next one. Can you elaborate on the transfer? I, no, I'm just kidding.
You don't want to hear that.
Yeah, our finance committee meeting was long enough. We don't need to hear all that again. Okay, so since you don't have any comments or questions, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. And any opposed? Okay, so that is the end of Committee on Finance, and now, we're going to go to Committee on Policy, and Ms. Raymond is going to do those motions.
Thank you. All right, so Policy, we had a couple of changes that didn't make it into the last packet, so these policies are from two meetings ago, or we should have voted on them last meeting, but they've been updated now. So I move that we approve policy JLCD administering medication to students. So I move that we approve policy JLCD administering medication to students.
Second.
And I'm sure everyone notices that there's a lot of red in this policy. Once again, we took a one-page policy and made it a five-page policy and added a whole bunch of legal references.
Are there any comments or questions? So, oh, yes, Ms. Bren.
I actually do have a question. I was, and it's probably, probably an oversight. When students go on field trips, for example, say somebody has an allergy and they have to carry an EpiPen. Are teachers then responsible for doing that or do they have to receive training? I didn't, I couldn't see anything in here on that and I was just curious.
So there is, in our policies, there are, there are two, one, two, two other policies coming. And one of them deals specifically with EpiPens. Because there are certain medications that students are allowed to self-administer. EpiPens and I believe insulin is the other one. Otherwise, they have to go to the nurse's office.
Yeah, I did see that, but I was thinking, I know that in past practice, there have been, you can't always bring a nurse with you on a field trip.
Right, yeah.
Say about that.
So I mean, I imagine that there will be circumstances, especially at the elementary level, where a teacher or a parent, or maybe the parent is one of the volunteers to supervise, chaperone the field trip, where that person would be in charge. But at least, certainly at middle and high school, it's typically the student. Sir Poska, did I miss anything on that?
Okay, so, so all those in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed? Okay, motion passes.
Okay, so the next one, I just have to keep scrolling. The next one is JLCD R1, which is Prescription Medication Administration Authorization Form. And this one is specifically for prescription medications, including the self-administered EpiPen. Oh, it wasn't insulin, it was an inhaler. I don't know why I was thinking insulin, and a self-administered inhaler. But this form is also for any other prescription medication that a family needs to send in. And there are there are specific, this is the authorization form, but in the policy we just approved, there are specific intake processes for the school nurses when they take them in to make sure that both parents, or parents, guardians and the school nurse feel comfortable that we all agree how much medication we got and how it's being stored. Oh, I didn't make the motion. I move that we approve JLCD R1 Prescription Medication Authorization Form.
Second.
Are there any further questions? Okay, so seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Okay, motion passes.
And then I move that we approve over-the-counter Medication Administration Authorization Form JLCD R2.
Second.
And are there any questions on this forum?
And just to speak to it, this one is specifically for like your over-the-counter Tylenol, I don't know, Benadryl, Ibuprofen, whatever. So. And all of these will be on our website and also available in the nurse's office and sent home on request.
All right, so all those in favor say aye.
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 And anyone opposed? Okay, motion passes.
Oh, I just have, I just noticed as I was scrolling through, it ended up having Tylenol and Ibuprofen crossed out. Didn't the nurses want that in there? No, they changed their mind.
They changed their mind.
Okay, then I'm happy.
Actually, if I could just jump in, I'd like to, Stacy Hines, who is our Director of Communication, also works closely with the nurses. She was working closely with Gina Lopez and the rest of the nurses in the district to get some vital input because these are the people who are usually using these forms on a daily basis. So it's more reflective, but they are input about how they utilize it on a daily basis. So some of the updates, particularly about the forms, were so very, very important, which is why we were still getting feedback from them, which is why we delayed the second reading of these policy forms so we could get that accurate.
Thank you. All right, and so the last item I have on second reading tonight is I move to rescind our old version of JLCD dash R because we have now replaced it with the version that we approved tonight.
Second.
Any questions or anything, or did you, anything for the one to say, Ms. Raymond?
No, I just that you can see on this one that it's significantly shorter than all of the instructions and details that we have on the new one. And this one has some old forms that are no longer applicable.
Okay, all right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And anyone opposed? All right, go ahead.
All right, and so the other items we have on the agenda are first readings of Student Co-Curricular Activity Eligibility. There's a small update about middle school eligibility. Previously, we just said at the beginning of each year, we would check people's eligibility. But for middle school, they have trimesters, so they need to be updated according to their trimesters. We have ACE, a notice of the contact information for our Title IX Coordinator. That's one that we update every year with the correct pupils' names. EA Transportation, we provide transportation to kindergarteners, but it didn't say so in our policy. So we have updated the policy to be clear that we do transport kindergarteners. And then background investigation and criminal records check. This one was expanded significantly over our previous one in some ways, so just everyone read it and ask questions if you have questions because we'll come back and build on it next month. And then we have two that we are asking to rescind because we don't, one is, I think is a form. Hold on, I'm still scrolling. One is a form that really isn't a policy. It's a form that goes with the defibrillator. And the other one is an advertising policy and all of that information is already included in another policy we have on advertising in school buildings. That was just a quick rundown, but they are on the agenda tonight for public comments and they will be on the agenda for voting next month.
Okay, so, so we don't have any motions for the Committee on Curriculum and Evaluation. Is there any updates that anyone would like, that Mr. Claffey would like to let us know about?
Dr. Surt, I think our next meeting is June?
Seventeenth, I believe.
Okay.
I believe it's the seventeenth.
Can I add something?
Of course.
So one plug for the CTE program, so I wasn't here for the May meeting because my daughter, who attended the culinary program here at North, was one of six students selected nationwide to participate in the culinary program at Disney over the summer, one of six nationwide. So shout out to Mr. Q, just wanted to throw that out there. Yeah, January seventeenth, I think.
Congratulations.
All right, so, so next is the Committee on Human Resources and are you gonna do that, Ms. Raymond?
Oh, sure. Hold on, I have closed it, so let me go back. Because I, I don't know if we have liaison reports, but Ms. Delio sent me her liaison reports also, later. All right, so on human resources, I move that we suspend the rules so that we can consider items from the HR meeting held earlier this evening.
Second.
Anyone in favor say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Okay, motion passes.
Okay, oh, sorry. So I move that we approve the personnel recommendations from this evening.
Second.
Sorry, who got it?
Very close.
I'm giving it to Ms. Darling.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. So we have two new administrators. So I move that we elect Peter Adropoulos to the position of Assistant Principal of New Surles Elementary School for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year at an annual salary of eighty-one thousand six eighty-eight.
I heartily second.
And we had a great talk with Mr. Adropoulos. He's currently a science teacher at Fairgrounds. And while I really hate to lose a science teacher at Fairgrounds, I think he's gonna be wonderful at New Surles. The interviews were great and I'm really excited to see his energy in a new role.
I'm sure he's gonna do wonderful.
Oh, he's still here.
So, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Congratulations, Mr. Adropoulos.
Congrats.
Okay, so now I move to elect Alice Wayland to the position of Middle School Special Education Coordinator at an annual salary of ninety-one thousand eight forty-six.
Second.
And just to speak to that a little bit, Ms. Wayland has been in the district for twenty, I forget how many, more than twenty-three years, twenty-four years, something like that. And she has worked in special education at the middle school level her whole career. She's the head teacher for special education at Elm Street. She's been mentoring students, mentoring students, mentoring new teachers in special education for the past five years, I think. And so she is just an invaluable resource and I'm really excited to see her take on this new position that we just created this year to help support our faculty and students and families. Anything else I missed?
No, she would still be with us, but tonight's her anniversary, so we let her go early, so.
Okay, all those in favor? Say aye.
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 Okay, so motion passes.
Great. And then we looked at some job descriptions this evening. So I move to approve the Director of Communications job description.
Second.
Okay, and I just encourage everyone to look at it. It has been expanded significantly since its last update in 2020. There's, I don't know, there's quite a bit in there about social media and press releases and providing advice and communication between the board and the community and the superintendent. Anything else?
Comments or questions or anything? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, so motion passes.
Great. All right, I move to approve the Chief Operating Officer job description.
Second.
And so this is Mr. Donovan's job. And his job description hasn't been updated in like twenty years. And so Mr. Donovan updated it to reflect what he actually does, just in time for him to retire so that we can make sure that we get somebody in there doing what we need them to do.
Okay, this is very sad, but all those in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed, Dr. Andre? Okay, yeah, motion passes.
Okay, I move to approve the Accountant's job description.
Second.
All right, and so this is not a position that we currently have. What we have right now is the Assistant Business Manager. And this job description is a little heavier on accounting skills. So that as we start to recruit, once we fill the Chief Operating Officer position, we have the option of utilizing this description for recruiting purposes to backfill or the business administrator and it just gives the, it gives administration a little bit more flexibility to find the right person with the right qualifications.
Yeah, I was a little, I thought at first it was a new position, so I was glad that you guys clarified that during the Human Resources meeting. Does anyone have any questions or comments or anything? All right, so seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Okay, motion passes.
Okay, and the last one, I move to approve the Civil Rights Coordinator job description.
Second.
This is a new position. This is, we had talked about this during the budget process and we had talked, we've been talking about it since I've been on the board. Previously, we called it the Title IX Coordinator because we have a lot of Title IX investigations. This description is a little bit more extensive than that. They would also be able to work on Title VII cases. Hopefully this will help actually save the district money because we will have less legal fees, but I don't.
Dr. Andre?
So I agree with that. It's not just purely financial, but it's really about like the safety and health of our students and our adults in the system. So again, I think it meets our legal requirements, but it also just creates more of our infrastructure to handle some issues that are arising.
Okay, so all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion passes.
That's all I had.
Okay, so I, so we don't have, we have, we don't have any unfinished business that we're gonna be discussing this evening. So we're gonna go right to our new business, which I believe, Ms. Fulton? Ms. Fulton will be presenting? Thank you.
So a little background, so I asked Ms. Fulton to come and this is for informational purposes. So we received our preliminary budget for our allocation for our Title I funding. And as you'll see, and I shared with you in your packet, that there's a significant decrease. So Ms. Fulton's here to present a little bit on the background. We've been in contact over the last week on what's our recommendation kind of going forward. So we wanted to be open and transparent on what we're currently thinking and how we're gonna support our students with Title I funding.
Thank you all so much. This is a happy presentation, I'm afraid. But I wanted to be, like Dr. Andre said, very transparent about this. So let me show you clearly that this year, our twenty-three, twenty-four allocation from the state and the federal government was about four point six million dollars. But we have gotten our new allocation for next year for twenty-four, twenty-five and they have reduced us to two point, four point two. So that's a difference of about three hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars that we have to adjust in what we allocate in the district to help our students. So in looking at that, I wanted to just kind of give you a little bit of a background that there are a few things in the grant that are non-negotiable. They absolutely have to be funded, don't have a choice, comes from the federal government. So one of those things is McKinney-Vento, which is our children in transition, the homeless population that we have. We have to have a small amount of money. It's not very large compared to what I'll show you next, but a small amount of money that is set aside for a student who might need tutoring to catch up because they had to, they've been moving or they haven't had a good, a steady place to sleep at night. Anybody who needs help with GED, summer programs, test fees, school supplies. Right now, we're getting a lot of requests for senior activities. So the seniors do an awful lot this last month and they all, of course, want to be a part of it and we want them to be able to. So things like tickets to proms or baseball games or whatever is coming up. We want to be able to pay that. So basically, we try really hard to remove any barriers so that education for those students are very smooth and they get what they need. So that is a non-negotiable with our federal government. The next one is also McKinney-Vento and it's a little bit more surprising, I think. It is our McKinney-Vento transportation. So we have to set aside an amount of money for our students who are, have to be able to get to school. And we have very, we have a lot of ways that we can, we can do this. We can do, if the parent is willing to drive, we can give mileage reimbursement. We can use our school system's school bus if it's feasible. And we also unfortunately have to sometimes hire out to a third-party contractor to get the students to school. We also have to share this. So if there is a student that attends school in Milford but can only find housing in Nashua, then it becomes the fifty-fifty proposition between Milford and Nashua to pay for this child to get back and forth to school. So we began this school year with a budget, twenty-three, twenty-four, our budget was two hundred thousand dollars. I've had to go in twice and up that budget. We are now at four hundred thousand dollars and I am not sure that's going to be enough. So at the very end of August, when all the bills are in, I may have to add more to that. So that is a really big chunk of our Title I funds and not everybody's aware of that. And I just wanted to make sure that you understood that it could be up to a half a million next year for transportation in McKinney-Vento, if we have to do that. The other thing that is non-negotiable in a Title I grant is giving non-public schools allocation. This is now based on the students who attend the non-public school that live in the Title I area. So any child who lives in one of our five Title I school areas but attends Notre Dame Academy, Presentation Mary, St. Christopher, there's, those. Academy, Presentation Mary, St. Christopher, there's a long list of schools that we would have to give some of our money to, to help those students who might be struggling in reading and math. We now have a state calculator, so I put in the 4.2 million, and then I put in how many students, and I look at the addresses and decide who lives in our district. I'll put, I'll plug that number in, and the calculator gives me the amount of money that the school is then allocated. And they follow the same rules that our schools here in Nashua do with what they can choose to spend their money on, we're very careful. Those are the only three schools this year that are taking funding from our 23-24 allocation, and it looks as if those are the three schools that will also take Title I funding again next year. And we'll go through their list of addresses, and we calculate. I think if I, if I can remember, pretty sure I know Notre Dame has about 16 children that live in a Title I district, so there's their fee. Presentation Mary is up to 20, and then St. Christopher has 65. So you can see the difference in what they're allocated. So all of those things come off of the grant, and then I start looking at what our schools need. We have five schools that are considered school-wide, which means anyone in the school can access Title I tutoring and help. We have one school that's called Targeted, and that is just a group of students who can be given the help that they need, and then they are given a test to see how they're doing, and if they score high enough, they can be removed from the program and someone else can be brought in. But those students can stay at the Targeted schools up to the whole year, or several years of just seeing the Title I tutor. So it's a little bit different when you're Targeted and you're school-wide. So back to the first slide where we saw that we have to lose $391,000 adjustment so that we can pay for things for our school students in our six schools. So I had a meeting with the Title I principals, I did not do this on my own, it's not a decision that was made lightly, it's devastating, but I spoke with Mario, with Kimberly, myself. We came up with these suggestions to cut from the budget in the Title I allocation next year so that we can have a budget that works for the six schools. So we have, right now, a blast-off program. We have a blast-off to kindergarten, which was actually my baby, that started 10, 12 years ago, so this is really hard. It was a program that we invite incoming kindergartners in the summer to spend four weeks in our schools and learn about what it's like to be a kindergartner, and in a very calm and quiet, you know, kind of atmosphere, so they're not afraid on the first day, and they love it. We provide lunch, we provide breakfast for them, it's been a great program. One of our schools, Fairgrounds Elementary, used to be a schooling of improvement, and one of the things that Michael Harrington and I decided to try was a school-wide blast-off program, so he has run that for years where he has students from kindergarten to fifth grade that come in for a summer school program. Those programs cost about $4,000, $40,000, so that would be something we would eliminate. We currently give a donation, we help with the Power Scholars, which is another summer program for our Title I schools to come in through the YMCA and their support. We would also be cutting that at $95,000. And then the heartbreaker for me is the Title I preschool. I want you to understand, I completely support early childhood education, started my career in early childhood education, I know the importance of it. Title I preschool has been in Nashville for over 40 years. We started at the church on Concord Street, we moved to Broad Street, we had hopes to join Franklin Street. This is not an easy decision, but you can see that it is a lot of money that will then balance the budget. I sent my budget to Mario today, and we have come in under at 4.2, basically 4.2 million. So, yeah. Difficult decisions.
So I just want to add, this is, again, a difficult conversation around the Title I preschool. We've been having the conversation on how do we combine the Franklin Street preschool and Title I preschool for about a year at this point, and we weren't ready for that transition this upcoming September. And again, why are we running two different programs? But I want the community to be fully aware, we currently have 50, about 50 families that signed up for the Title I preschool come September. Sherry's working with those families, we're going to be, we opened up another 30 seats at Franklin Street preschool for those families to be peers, and we also reached out to our community partners, who several already have said they'll provide scholarships for these families, so any family that was currently signed up for a preschool program will have the opportunity for a preschool experience next year. You know, this is, again, devastating, as Sherry said, but we're, all the administrators were cognizant of making sure that all the families are going to be supported during this transition, and then again, as we move forward with the Franklin Street preschool, where are those areas of expansion? Because we only had about, again, 50 students in the Title I preschool, we still might be able to absorb those families historically with that enrollment at Franklin Street. So just really, it's going to be, it's lost of a revenue source, and so we're hoping, again, in the future to continue providing preschool experiences for all those who are asking, just in a different fashion.
Anyone have any questions? Ms. Raymond?
I have so many questions. So I read that Manchester lost like $900,000.
Correct.
But I don't understand what, like, the genesis for the change in the Title I funding. Is it a state thing? Is it a enrollment thing? Like, where did the, what is the change? What happened, I guess, is my question, that made the funding get cut?
When we received the allocation, they did say that because enrollment is going down in the state of New Hampshire for children, that that's why we got cut from the federal government. They send me a list of all of the, either school district or the town specifically, and how much their allocation was. Every one in New Hampshire went down.
Yeah, it was a decrease from the federal government to the state.
And then, so my next, I'm just going to go through the slides and ask my questions, most people have problems with that. And so my next question is about our allocations to our non-public schools in the, in the area. So I understand that we are required, we're required to provide transportation to all of those students under state law, and are required to share our Title I under federal law. How does this interact with our school voucher program? So kids who are not attending our schools but are receiving $5,000 apiece from the state to help offset their costs to the private school, do they, does that have any interaction with our requirement to give them Title I funds? So it's like a double dip?
So the only thing that I can speak to is that the for-profit schools do not receive Title I funds, however, the nonprofit schools receive Title I funds. I can't speak.
That's interesting, okay.
Yeah.
I have a question. So our funding, so our allocations went down, our Title I allocation went down because we have less enrollment. What about these other schools, St. Christopher's, Presentation of Mary, and Notre Dame Academy? Did their allocation go up or down?
I will not know until I have their, the students who have enrolled, and then I have to compare their addresses to see if they live in a title area. All three schools are reporting that they are at maximum capacity for next year, so I do not know, but because we have less money to share, they will probably, they will also get less money.
Were they at maximum capacity last year?
I'm sorry?
Were they at maximum capacity last year?
Yes, they were.
Okay. I'm sorry, anyone?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I have a question on every page of your slide, which is just typical for me, and it's not, not personal in any way. So the budget cuts for 24-25, the Power Scholars, that's this summer, kids who are expecting to come?
No, it's the following. So this year, we're all set, we have our blast-off programs running and staffed and up and great.
Such a great program, like, that, that one hurts, like, hurts me significantly, I want to cry about this. Because I, we see those kids, we see the effect on learning loss of this program, it's a, it's a great program, and I just hate it. And then my next question, I guess, would be to Dr. Andre. So this has come after our budget presentation to the aldermen, and I know that we were talking about this ad hoc committee that the aldermen have for building projects, right? And we've already done our presentation for our, our budget for next year, but one of the things that the ad hoc committee asked us to do was to come up with $350,000 to pay for facilities analyses, right? And now we're $350 in the hole for this. Like, is there an opportunity to go back to the aldermen and say, listen, our budget, because of the feds, has changed, is there any wiggle room, any way that they could, you know? I know they haven't voted yet, but could they, could they fund some of the programs that we would otherwise have to cut?
That's always an option. I mean, we would have to present to the Board of Aldermen at this point, but I think there's two separate, you know, if.
No, it's a bunch altogether, right?
Yeah, I mean, how we would incorporate that. I mean, it's, again, we would be asking for, as we've looked at our priorities, our ELL teachers, our special education teachers, you know, if they, when in our deferred maintenance. So again, I think there's an aspect, when we look at this, that would be a quick Band-Aid, but I think we would still be having a larger conversation again next year on how do we fund the preschool program. I don't foresee our Title I allocation increasing in the near future, and then again, with a lot within our Title I budget is salaries and benefits, so I think it's going to get tighter over the next couple of years. So I would just be cautious on saying where you're going to put another 350 into the preschool when I think we can come up with a plan, again, whether how many students can we incorporate into Franklin Street, again, just that economy of scale to still provide access and opportunity for our community in high-quality pre-K programs, and I think Franklin Street might be able to absorb much of this.
Okay, and my last question, I actually know the answer to, but I'm going to ask it publicly anyways, because I, I reached out to Mr. Donovan, I don't know, like, three weeks ago, a month ago, because I had a constituent doing some research about preschool funding, and so it's really interesting that they, that this is now coming up. Is there any money from the state to, to provide preschool services in New Hampshire?
Not, no specific program at this time. But if I can just add on to what Dr. Andre was saying, the 95 and the 40, that's not going to affect the 24-25 budget, because that would be the following year's budget. So if you wanted the blast-off program, you could put it into the budget for 25-26. So, because the grant runs at a different time, it runs September to September as opposed to the, so those two summer programs will run this summer. If you wanted to keep that program, it could be put in next year's budget. The only thing that's going to affect this coming school year is the Title I preschool.
Right. And then, I'm sorry, just backing up, I do have one more. You said it's going to be, you think it's going to hit half a million dollars for the McKinney-Vento transportation?
I, I'm a little bit concerned about that, yes.
And I would expect that that is going to just keep going up as we continue to have a housing crisis.
There are no, and the regulations aren't very clear.
Right.
On what we can do, right?
There's no place for people to move to.
So just one point of reference, I was just looking at some bills, just to give some perspective. So from January until June, January to June, we provided transportation for five students who are attending school in Manchester. Our half for the five students from January to June that we had to pay was $66,560 for five students.
And that's because they became unhoused while they were, they were our students when they became unhoused, and so they are, continue to be our students?
So there are definitely unique circumstances, but if, if the place where they are in transition, where they're residing on a traditional, transitional basis rather, is in Nashua, then we have to share the cost for them to attend school in Manchester.
Oh, where they were going before, so that the kids have consistency.
That's correct.
Which makes sense, that's in the best interest of students, right? We want them to have consistency until the end of the school year, whenever possible. So, like, I agree with that law, I just don't know how we pay for it. All right, thank you, I appreciate you entertaining my endless questions.
Any other comments or questions?
I just wanted to make a comment. I think it's really upsetting that our state does not fund preschool appropriately. Meanwhile, they're sucking money out of the public schools to go to private schools through their radical voucher program. So I think that if anyone else here has an issue with that, they should probably let their representatives know and vote accordingly. Thank you.
Thanks. The next item on the agenda is looking for a recommendation to approve the NTU MOU for the 24-25 professional days. Essentially, this MOU is just codifying how the three professional days are going to be used. Just for your information purposes, if we use all three professional development days, one is professional, the district-led, one is a 50-50 day between the district and teacher choice, and the third one is essentially teacher choice. And so this MOU is just codifying which day is going to be which. So, and I really want to thank the NTU leadership for coming up with this MOU, but again, this is just codifying how we're going to use the three days.
So moved? Right. I thought you said you'd be looking for, sorry, Dr. Andre.
Right. So I'll second it, Mr. Clavie. So I do have a question, it's tangential, because that's how my brain works. Someone brought to my attention recently that our calendar for next year only has 179 days. Is that a problem? Okay.
No, we meet the requirements by hours.
Okay, and it's not, it's not a problem with the teacher's contract, which lists days, right? Because they still have the same number of paid days in their contract. Okay. Yes, I will wholeheartedly support this.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Okay, so all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, anyone opposed? Okay, motion passes.
So the next item is, I'm looking for a recommendation to approve three sidebar agreements to the NTU collective bargain agreement for the teacher's contract, the secretarial contract, and the paraeducators' contracts for the 24-25 school year. Essentially, we've been working with the NTU collaboratively to simplify the procedures for sick bank in those three contracts, and you'll see redlined copies of those sidebar agreements. Essentially, what we're looking for is, as Mr. Hoffman mentioned earlier, an easier way for teachers to participate in sick bank, more that they're donating a day at the beginning, and then notifying the district if they're going to opt out. So it's just reversing the process. And if there's any questions on that, Mr. Balsis is here as well to explain it further. Yeah, the sick bank, just again, not to get into too much information, the previous system where teachers were opting into the system, we were running in a deficit on how many days that were in the bank, so this is again, a more proactive way. Again, I want to thank the NTU leadership on coming up with these recommendations, and again, this is a change that's been going back and discussed for many years, so it's just finally coming to fruition.
I'll make that motion. Second. Any questions or, oh, go ahead, Ms. Raymond.
I'm sorry, I have lots of questions. So my question, so I'm not opposed to sick banks. My question is about how the process will work for individuals who, two questions, who they automatically are enrolled in, and then they discover over the course of their career that they have a pregnancy or a medical issue or whatever, and they no longer want to be, like, do you, I guess, let me back up. If you, if you, if you are in the sick bank, you can withdraw from the sick bank. If you don't, if you opt out of the sick bank, does that mean you cannot later opt in? That's where I was going. That's where I was going.
So I think there's, like, on each year, you can opt in and...
So it's an annual thing, so you can make the decision. And then, how much do you have to contribute to the sick bank? It's just one day a year?
So we're asking for one day.
All right. And then, the last question I have is, currently, if there's a deficit, does that mean that people facing serious illnesses or expanded leave that they weren't expecting simply don't get, like, don't have anything to draw on, so they have to take unpaid leave?
So we, that hasn't been the practice, which we're trying to fix kind of going forward, so. But also, you'll see the language in here about replenishments. So there is language for, too far in a deficit, we can ask for a larger donation for that replenishment. But in this system, we're just looking for one, one day annually, proactively.
Just curious, because I've been a union member in every career that I've had, and I've had a major, like, I had a horrible pregnancy where I ran out of sick days. But once you ran out, if there were no sick days in the bank, like, that was it, it was two months of being on breadsticks with no pay. So we don't necessarily do that, but this, could this open the door to that?
From everything that I gathered, I don't see that happening. I think the district has been very supportive. I mean, I don't know if there's individual cases, but in my, all my conversations with HR and the business office and NTU, we want to make sure that if a teacher's in need of days, that they receive them. But there may be a case once, like, here or there. But again, I think we've been very supportive of teachers requesting the days.
Just from experience, anyone that is eligible to receive them, even though we've been running, like, the federal government with these three unions, negative for years, so it needed to be fixed, but we haven't said anyone, well, since it's negative, you're not going to get the days. So if they're eligible for the days, they receive the days.
Okay, thank you. Ren?
I mostly just have a comment. I really like the way this is set up. And I say, as a person who's a union member, who's used my sick bank, I encourage any teacher, I would definitely opt in. It's, you never know. I went in for a simple back surgery, which ended up turning into a full fusion, and I ended up missing half a school year. And if it weren't for my sick bank, I would not have gotten paid.
All right, so all in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Okay, motion passes. Oh, yes, do we have any liaison reports? I know Ms. Giglio's not here. Go ahead, Ms. Raymond.
Ms. Giglio emailed me her update from the JSSBC. Did you want me to just read the highlights?
Oh, yeah, that would be great. And I don't know if anyone's here who attended the ed council. So we'll have to do the ed council update next time, but you could read Ms. Giglio's if you'd like. Thank you.
All right. So Ms. Giglio, and I apologize, I missed this JSSBC because the house session lasted until, like, 9:00 PM last week. So on McCarthy Medical, on McCarthy Middle School, the architectural and punch lists are close to done, the kitchen punch list is done, the furniture deliveries are going well, the final paving will be done the week of the Fourth of July, the track resurfacing will take place in June, the temporary day of occupancy was the end of April, and the final date is scheduled for August 1st. So that sounds like it is perfectly on schedule. Yay. Pennachuck, they're working on the dehumidifier project, and the roof leaks are partially covered by warranty, which, what is that? Dr. Andre, were you there? Does that mean we have to pay for part of it, even though we paid for new roofs?
I was there. Have to go back.
Or does it mean that the contractor has to pay for it? Because they...
I think everything's, I just have to verify my notes.
Okay. Well, now I'm interested to find out. I haven't watched it yet. Okay, Bartella and Mandy are on track. The security update for Dr. Chris, the preparations are continuing, and the work will begin in June. We're waiting on a new design for the new Searls security vestibule. There's a design for Mount Pleasant on paper, but it's not paid for, and that's it.
Okay, thank you. Oh, okay. Yeah, do we have any public comments? Could you grab the sheet, Mr. Johnson? Thank you. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, so I think we have some experienced speakers here tonight. So I'm just going to go quickly, quickly state that each speaker will have three minutes, and I'm going to set a timer. And if the public comment period exceeds 15 minutes, I'm going to need a motion to extend the time. And the first on the list is Stephen Scar, and his topic is gender policies. And could you state your name and address, Mr. Scar?
Stephen Scar, 111 East Hobart Street, Nashua. Good evening. Please reconsider Nashua's gender policies and practices in light of international developments. Last month, the National Health Services England released the CAST review, a four-year study of gender medicine research conducted in response to the spike in referrals to gender services, especially among females with autism and mental health issues. The report concluded that there's no sound evidence that children benefit from puberty blockers and hormones, and acknowledges that gender identity is spread through social media and peer groups. It notes that although suicide rates are higher for trans-identifying youth, they're still rare and similar to other youths with the same coexisting mental health conditions, and there's no evidence that puberty blockers and hormones lower the risk. The review warns against socially transitioning children at schools with new names, pronouns, and clothes because of that, and I quote, "clear risk of creating persistence of an identity that would in all likelihood have resolved by itself." This month, the German Medical Congress resolved that, I quote, "the current medical evidence clearly and unambiguously states that puberty blockers, blocking drugs, opposite-sex hormone treatments, and gender reassignment surgeries, mastectomies do not improve gender dysphoria symptoms or mental health in minors. These are irreversible interventions in primarily healthy minors who cannot give informed consent in the absence of evidence for such measures. They, too, warn against social transitioning. Medical panels in Sweden, Norway, France, Finland, and Scotland have arrived at the same conclusions. Hormonal interventions are harmful and ineffective. In the U.S., our major societies haven't given any consideration to these findings. The American model of care in which troubled 15-year-olds and children who still believe in Santa diagnose themselves of a chronic condition and are eventually turned into lifelong medical patients has been a goldmine for the medical industry. Nashua, quote, "schools are complicit in the greatest medical scandal in history by teaching through displays like the one down the hallway, the flags, that a girl can be born with a soul, that this gender identity, not her body, is her authentic self, and she's at risk of suicide unless she allows endocrinologists and surgeons to reshape her. Please read the summaries of the CAST reviews and consider how you can protect children from a destructive ideology which has become the established religion of our schools. And I realize not everyone agrees with me on this issue, and I'll be happy to hang around and talk to anyone about the research. Thank you."
Thank you. Next up, we have Susan Lewis.
Hi, Susan Lewis, 9 Iris Court. I am a Nashville High graduate. I am a retired Nashville teacher. I spent 12 years, part-time and full-time, at Mount Pleasant. I'm a current grandparent of a Mount Pleasant student, and I'm a current volunteer at Mount Pleasant. Last July, we filled this auditorium with people. We spoke our hearts, we shared our concern about closing of our school, and here we are. We're still waiting. We're still waiting. I have concluded from listening to Ms. Bishop that she just wants to close the school. I also conclude by watching the ad hoc meetings that she may be looking for the city to make that decision to close our school, so it doesn't fall back on the board. I will say, in my personal life and my professional life, I never based any important decisions on hearsay or side conversations like she has referred to. Mount Pleasant has now caught up in this web of redistricting. I feel like we're being punished because of lack of maintenance by former administrators. So it's not our fault that this has occurred. And I fear for the staff and the school population. It's being whittled away by such uncertainty. Last week, you started a conversation about setting a date and making a decision. What happened? What happened? This is very, this is very sad.
Thank you. And next up, we have Gary Hoffman.
Gary Hoffman, 38 Perran Street. I agree with Ms. Lewis said, we, really, this board really needs to set the date for that Mount Pleasant meeting. I also, you know, remember listening to the last meeting, that during the conversation, I can't believe that they're still bringing up Mr. Preston's report as evidence that they should close Mount Pleasant. I thought, you know, you've heard a number of people explain some of the issues with Mr. Preston and his report, and I really hope that you reconsider even looking at that. I do want to mention one other issue, and it's the middle school plan for next year. In March, we received preliminary average class size numbers, and this board said that we're going to revisit some of those numbers and, as the variances came in, and make a decision in particular about Fairgrounds Middle School, if they're going to be adding any teams. At the very least, you should, this board should be getting the median class sizes for Pennachuck, McCarthy, and Fairgrounds Middle School to see, you know, what we're looking at next year. I know the middle school teachers would appreciate that information. I know a lot of the variances that are the three middle schools have already come in. I think we've got to be getting close to getting an idea of what those class sizes are going to look like. So please, let's get those median class sizes at the three middle schools and make a decision on whether or not you're going to add those teams, teachers to Fairgrounds Middle School based on the data that's come in. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. And next, we have Alex Tumala.
Alex Tumala, 6 Air Street. I just wanted to say, 390 days. We've been waiting.
Thank you. And finally, our last public comment is from Donna Marie Vic.
Hello, Donna Marie Vic, 19 Raymond Street. On behalf of our Mount Pleasant community, our teachers, our staff, families, and especially our students, next will be a planned moment of silence. Now I can't turn it off. After that. So, time to get to work on the Mount Pleasant issue, an issue you stated you would start tackling in September 2023, after a brief hiatus from your July 24-23 meeting. It's time to make a decision. Thank you.
Thank you. And that's it for our, that's it for our public comments. So, thank you, everyone. We appreciate your time, and we value your contributions to our meetings. Keep coming, keep speaking up, or not. And now, we're going to go to board member comments, and because I started with Ms. Raymond, I'm going to start with Mr. Johnson this time.
Just an update from the last meeting. Severn Johnson, Nashua South Senior, played for Team Ireland over the weekend in the Heritage Cup in Pennsylvania. They beat Puerto Rico, Sweden, Israel, Poland, and then a second Puerto Rican team to win the championship. So congratulations to Severn, who I know quite well, and he represented Nashua very well in the tournament, and it's very exciting to see them win the cup. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm just going to thank everyone for their comments tonight. I haven't forgotten about Mount Pleasant, and also the numbers that we've talked about at the middle schools, those numbers on a personal level, as my son is going to middle school next year, are concerning as well, and I hope that we do have opportunities to discuss soon.
No comment.
Much to my own surprise, no comment.
Well, we won't be meeting again until after graduation, so I just want to say congratulations to all of the seniors for all of the hard work that they've done, and best of luck on their next endeavors.
So, since our last meeting, I was able to attend two school events. I went to Mount Pleasant Bingo Night, just put on by their PTO, and it was really great. The whole, the whole gym was filled with people. It was a great time. I won a bike, and it's, it's going to be donated at the Tree Street Festival, and so it's just sometime in June, so if you'd like, like a bike, go put a bid on it. And then I also, me and the husband went to our first Fisher Cats game. We were invited by the music teacher from New Searls, because her, one of her classes actually sang the National Anthem at the baseball, and it was really, really fun to see them. They were all excited, and they did a great job. And, and I got to meet the teacher, who was a first-year music teacher, and it was really great for her to take the time to, first of all, get the kids to, you know, get the kids in line to do this, and then to make sure that they were all there, and, you know, the parents were on board and everything. So just wanted to give her a shout out. So thanks very much, and I'm looking forward to graduation. Take care, everyone.
I'm looking for a motion to adjourn. So moved.
Second.
And everyone in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion passes, we're adjourned. At 7:47.